Okay.
All the North Plains Planning Commission for June the 11th to order at six o'clock. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and freedom of the heart.
But I please get the roll call.
Thank you Chair King.
Here.
Vice Chair Labonte, Commissioner House.
Here.
Commissioner Penn Odell.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Farah.
Here.
Commissioner Nunenkamp.
Here.
Your ex officio is Mayor Goodwin. I haven't spoken for myself.
Excuse Dan unless we hear otherwise. All right, item number four is public comment. This is the time for anyone on Zoom or in the audience to comma, comment on any items of planning commission bus. Let the record show there's no one in the audience?
Didn't receive anything prior to the meeting.
Okay, and no one on Zoom?
Other than our ODOT rent.
ODOT as well.
Okay. Move on to five is approval of the minutes. This is the minute D, the 14th. Has everyone read those? Is there any changes? If not, all in their day motion.
Uh, one correction on one of the comments on, uh, under land use applications. On the third line down, I think it should be traffic signals.
Okay. I haven't even looked at it all. Look at it while you guys do things.
Anything else?
Move to the minutes on May 14th and with the. By adjustments adjustments.
All second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Nunenkamp for approval of the May 14th minutes with minor correction. All votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those both minutes are approved. Okay, move on to item number six is unfinished business. Glenn Boland with ODOT. Staff, do you want to take over, introduce and let us know what we're doing here?
Okay, no problem.
Sure, thanks everybody. Um, we're, I don't know that, um, the city's UGB concept planning grant, um, our partner with the trend with, with the state's transportation growth management program, which is co-sponsored by the Oregon Department of Transportation and the Department of Land Conservation and Development. We have a, um, two thirty, $230,000 grant that they awarded us a couple of years ago, contract executed last October to do formal concept planning process over a 12 to 18 month period to basically do the coloring in of the map for what, um, a planned urban, with the city's planned urban growth boundary expansion is. And I don't know if this body has kind of gotten a, uh, an overview of it. It's kind of been discussed at the city council level. Um, but the project has been underway since November and we've had to move the, the phase, the, the stages of the project around a little bit, um, to get some work done and progress on it without beginning the public outreach process because we don't yet have firmly what, um, if what urban growth boundary expansion is going to be moved forward. So having said all of that, uh, Glenn Boland, who is the ODOT Region One Contracts Manager and Glenn, I invite any correction of that job description if you please. Um, but we have a presentation, a number of slides about the TGM program and what he does. Um, and as a partner with us, and then the rest of the slides is really specific, are really specifically about our planning grant and what it's intended to accomplish and elements of that process. So Glenn, if you want to go ahead.
Could I just add something before you move on to that?
Oh.
Um, my understanding is that according to the, uh, the relook, uh, project, uh, the next step from the recommendation from the relook is that the planning commission is to now is to take a look at that and determine if we're going to make recommendation to city council. Is that correct? And so this is the kind of the precursor to that next step.
Yeah, that's, that, that is the, that's the very next step. So, um, you know, I, exactly. So, but before that very next step, um, it, we thought it would be a good idea to go over some of this so that you better, you all better understand that if you move something forward, this is literally waiting around for that to move forward in order to make major, get major work done on community outreach, technical analysis, all that, all that stuff. So Glenn, let me go ahead and turn it over to you and I have the presentation up.
Okay, I see that. Everyone see it. All right. Yeah, thanks for introducing me. Uh, there, there, Glenn Boland. Uh, I, I am a planner with ODOT. I, um, in, administer the, the TGM, which is transportation growth management grants and, and, uh, then I work with cities and counties and metro and everyone else just as a planner does. Um, but yeah, I wanted to just have a few minutes to, um, let y'all know what our program is since, you know, I think you've heard about the planning process, but not, you know, why the state granted money and all that. So I've got a few kind of canned slides here that I'm going to skip over some kind of click quickly. Um, just kind of describe what the program is, just so you know, but we can always stop, ask questions, whatever, but like, uh, whoever's controlling, if anyone was rowing or whoever else, just go to the next slide.
So it's me and I. There we go. Go ahead.
Okay. Click, there we go. So boring, boring, 25, 30 year old program. We really started when cities had to do transportation system plans. And since then, we've really expanded to a lot more of, of planning for growth and, and connecting land use and transportation together. I'm square the next slide. Uh, yeah, we funded like, yes, over a thousand projects. So we have, uh, this is an application based grant program. Um, and, and we have, uh, you know, admission statement like any program does, really trying to, you know, I said, link land use transportation, creating places that are full service communities, put places where we have the choices to not have to drive all the time, can, you know, park once, walk, um, you know, live close to destinations, that sort of thing. Next, next slide. I kind of go through slides quickly. So yeah, so when we, when we ask for, for grant applications, we have a series of objectives that we broadcast. This is what we're trying to accomplish as, uh, as a group here is we're trying to avoid transportation choice. We're trying to, you know, help communities evolve, uh, be, be complete communities. Um, I think great example of that was, you know, we worked on the downtown plan together and that was, you know, definitely the city is growing, wanting to have more destinations locally. Not have to leave, um, make it more place to, to, to stick around, um, and help those businesses grow, which ties in the next one, supporting economic and vitality and growth. So really, you know, planning for people and goods and movement and everything all together, um, helping people be good stewards of the, of their, you know, their budgets. So helping to create plans that are, are fiscally sound. And then obviously environmental stewardship is a component of any, uh, you know, planning in Oregon. Let's go to the next slide. So, um, we are a full range of program. I'm going to talk about, you know, one real dot here, but so within the tree, transportation growth management, TGM realm, we have a whole bunch of different kinds of grants. Um, some are short and quick, some are long. What we're doing right here is kind of on the bottom left there is area plans. Um, so this is the same program that we use for the downtown plan, just a different type of area. Let's go to the next slide. Um, because we also do transportation plans, we do bike plans, PED plans, open space plans, all kinds of things. But yeah, let's hit the next slide. Okay. So this is a boring slide. The whole point of this is to let you know that in region one, I get about a million dollars a year that I get to give away in grants. I say, I, I'm the administrator of the program, but it's a joint program with us and DLCDs. So we, we bring things together. Um, that translates usually to between three and four projects. Let's, uh, go ahead into the next slide. Um, they kind of range between like 150 to $300,000. It's a competitive cycle. So like, you know, this year I think I'm probably looking at about 10 applications um, for that ma, that money. Um, and so, uh, I will say that the TGM, um, committee, our, our board overseeing us, um, they really do appreciate, uh, working with smaller communities. Uh, we feel like, you know, we've really structured a program, uh, where we take care of the contracting, we take care of, of the bill paying, we take care of all of the stuff. So a city can just work on being a city. Um, we even, you know, can develop scopes of work, all those kinds of things. We work in a lot of places like, you know, say Ontario or halfway where they might just have a city clerk, um, and they don't have a planning staff. And so we, we feel like this is a program that really can come in and help cities that don't have the resources that some of these bigger towns have. We do work in places like Portland, but the program really loves working with cities like small, like, uh, North Plains, smaller communities and, uh, even county projects. These are, are, these are, our, our projects that we do have federal money for these things. So they are, we've got a three year cycle for when we grant projects to when we, we, uh, finish them up. Typically takes two weeks or two months, two years for a project. I think, uh, Bill mentioned somewhere between 12 and 18 months for this one was our scope. Um, and then there is a, a, a local match, but that's done through in-kind labor. And, and so, um, it's, it's not a whole lot. We have like a 12% panel, 10.27, I think, something like that percent match for the federal government that we have to cover, but days, I've never seen that. They have big problems. It's not an actual cash outlay. It's just a little bit of, uh, whatever the staff ends up working on. So let's go ahead to the next page here. See what I got. Remember here. Um, so yeah, you know, I, I touched on these that we have a bunch of things. I'm just going to hit them real quick, but the, the bread and butter we started was the transportation plans. Now we do a lot more, um, and even if not doing TSPs, we're doing bike PED plans. Like we're about to do Washington County's um, active transportation plan. So y'all probably going to be involved in that because we'll look at all the bike and pedestrian routes around the county. Let's go to the next page. And then, and this is what we're at here is these integrated transportation and land use plans. And so, you know, downtown plan was one of these kind of things. I think there's a, there's one on the right there that was the West Side Area Hood River. Um, I think, uh, I think I might have another one down below that was, um, the, we did Tiger's, uh, downtown plan a couple of years ago. So these are, um, these are the full service kind of thing. These are land use of transportation. We get into, sometimes we get into future regulations from development or for parking. Um, uh, downtown Tiger, for example, they did some rezoning and followed up with some parking strategies and all kinds of different things. Um, and it really is focusing on this, this connection of land use and transportation. Um, there, there's for urban areas or urbanizing areas. So, um, uh, in this particular case, yes, looking at, hey, we, you know, we learned from the application, the city had been working on expanding its urban growth boundary. We thought, hey, this is a, this is a great application for the kind of source of money that's just right for this to help cities do a good job planning so they can have good control over their, their destiny. Um, and, and again, we have our, kind of our priorities of, you know, efficient land use plans, uh, efficient transportation. Um, and then obviously at the final, what they're helping with the other implementation measures, you know, these follow up with, hey, you know, zoning and code amendments, strategies for development, redevelopment, intergovernmental agreements, all the things that might come out of that to help develop the, you know, they implement the plans as they were. So I did the next slide. I think that's the access, that's it. Um, so I'm going to turn it over here in a second, but so I just want to, a little bit of background that's not in my slides is that this grant city puts this grant in as they were working on the UGB. We just wrapped up the downtown plan and, uh, they put in this grant application in 2022. Um, as the city was working on the UGB, our contracting is slow as molasses at ODOT. So we had talked to the city while we do the downtown plan, we knew they're in the work. We're like, yeah, apply for the grant before you're done because it takes me like a year to get a contract through ODOT. And so, so the city was, was, uh, forward thinking and applied for the grant before they, you know, as they were working on the UGB, uh, application. And then, um, I think we were kind of, we, uh, um, we were working on the scope when y'all had the community conversations about with the ballot measure stuff. So we kind of held off a little bit. And then, um, with the relook, we, we, uh, when the relook going on, we, we updated our scope. We signed a contract back in August as a, we called a work order contract, um, which we're the consultant. So we selected a consultant. We pay them, you know, directly. We, um, we didn't want to, um, uh, you know, getting any, any kind of issues or anything. So, you know, we've had our consultant just doing background work, just the kind of background research you have to do for planning, like, you know, topography, terrain, what are the existing zoning codes and policies, things like that, and had them prepare, you know, the, one of the tasks is, you know, what, if we're moving forward, what to do for public engagement. So that's kind of where they're at now is they're on hold. Um, we, we, you know, we allowed them to do the first couple of few tasks to get rolling, but we're not going to, um, let the project move forward until we know that the city is in a comfortable place with, um, with the public and all your community members and where you want to be. Um, looking, we, we kind of have this assumption in my mind that, you know, you did a lot of work with the relook, um, advisory committee, and that's a good place to start. I think I mentioned, um, I think last month that I do have a deadline on this money. Um, I have to spend it by basically in a year from now. Um, and so that kind of, we, we are kind of at a spot like, if we want to use this, and this kind of way, I wanted to come in and bring this is if we want to continue this grant, great, I'd love to. But I do need to be able to give the consultant a go ahead fairly soon. If not, we might have to look at, um, you know, a different grant cycle. Um, it's, you know, um, but like I said, I got about 10 applications coming this year. So it'll be out in the future a bit. So I just wanted to put that out there and be real honest. Um, I want to help. I want to help. Um, and, and I think you can see that my program has strong goals and objectives. We're not a, uh, uh, you know, um, we're not a, you know, federal program that brings in Dr. Horton, Dr. Horton for some giant development where we're really community oriented, grassroots, ground up planning that can bring information to your city council, your planning commission initiative council. So, uh, if there are any questions, let me know. Otherwise I think Bill, you're going to take over with kind of where the scope is.
Correct. Thank you, Glenn. Anybody, any questions for Glenn?
I, I have one question just, just regards to the timeline is the mine must be used from one year from today. So June of 26 or December of 25?
June of 26. Great question. Yeah, we, uh, we have, that's, that's when our, um, the, the absolute did the last federal deadline. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Glenn. Anybody else? No one? Okay. Okay. So I just want to walk through a bit about the grant, um, kind of some of the scope specifics and some of the work that's been, um, done so far. So going back to the application for the grant back in 2022, um, like Glenn mentioned, and then working on the scope of work and waiting around for the contract for a while. Glenn's not kidding when he says it takes a while for ODOT to, to go through and, and, and run a contract through. Um, these next couple of slides are really just what the intent of the, of the concept plan is. When a North Plains, of course, is like other little cities, other cities with their own UGB outside of the Portland metro region, outside of the Portland metro UGB. And, um, when the north, when this, when a city like North Plains with its own urban growth boundary considers and expands its urban growth boundary, our sequence of events regarding concept planning, what happens inside the line. Um, our sequence is actually the reverse of what people in the region are used to seeing. Um, in terms of a city like North Plains with its own UGB has to, has to figure out where a line should, an outer line, new line should be. And then after approving that line, going through and doing a formal concept planning process to figure out, to paint inside the line where everything goes and what it looks like and what, all the things that it needs to accomplish. Over in the Portland Metro UGB, where you probably have heard, where we heard a lot of people come in and express opinions about North Plains' urban growth boundary expansion. They go through the process of concept planning in an area and then expanding the urban growth boundary line around that area after it's been concept planned. So we're kind of in a funny spot where people think, well, what's it going to look like? I don't want to approve anything or support anything until after a line is drawn. Or until after things are kind of, we know what it's going to look like and where things are going to be and how it's going to work together and where the transportation is going to be. Um, we're kind of in the funniest situation of we have to put a line out there first and then plan it. And that's what this grant is. So um, it kind of maybe makes sense or doesn't make sense from an order perspective, but that's where we are. And the big things to accomplish with the grant are really just try to figure out all the different types of housing, housing choices and options. How they work together regarding, um, where, uh, they, where people in the future with the different types of housing and affordability levels and or density types, or whatever you want to call them, based on community goals. And then how, where are they in relation to, um, where future employers are going to be? The, the big one on this slide, this is the second slide, the big one here that I don't, I, you know, you know, we talk, you know, I kind of mentioned housing choices and options that this process will go through and identify, identify. But one of the big elements of this that, that needs to be underscored is we will also be going through and figuring out a roadmap and a phasing plan for how to finance the infrastructure as the, as growth happens uh, over time out towards the edge of the urban, the new urban growth boundary, whatever it is. So this isn't just putting colors on a map of what goes where and how it works together. It's where does the infrastructure go? What types? How much is it going to cost? And how, what does the city need to do to adequately fund it? Um, whether it's system development charges, local improvement districts, working with the state on certain opportunities to fund, depending on what the use or the, you know, the type of industry is, that sort of thing. All that stuff we will get into in this process too. Um, and then that will tee the city up for doing things like new, new master plans for parks, new master plans for, um, streets. And then, um, which will then lead to system development charge methodology updates so that we can formally pay, have the growth paid for it. Um, and then finally kind of on this, the slide, you know, what do the neighborhoods look like so that they are more accessible? We don't have to go back years later and put sidewalks in for folks. We plan everything upfront and it's fully accessible and, and meets the needs of all the residents of North Plains. Um, who will be who are now here and who will be here in the future, um, you know, whatever level of mobility they might have. As well as multimodal need, um, to the extent that we can plan for it, uh, with the growth that will come our way. The formal scope of work includes these elements, project management, um, which is already underway. We had to, that was really kind of kicked it off with understanding. We kind of worked out with ODOT and the consultants, everything that needed to be done by sequence. That got changed up a bit with the vote on the UGB as we planned it. So as Glenn said, we had to move technical studies around, um, and do that first before doing community engagement. The community engagement element of this process is currently on hold. We have a technical advisory committee in the scope to include experts in the field of housing, different industries that we've targeted and a variety of other topics that really need to kind of have utilities, PGE, a member from PGE, somebody from Northwest Natural, all of the kind of the major, you know, detail or the kind of the detail experts on, on doing the land use planning for the different uses we want to consider. There's also a project advisory committee that's set up, that would be set up and have meetings that would kind of be the community advisory group. Um, it can look like, it can be, it can be based on the relook advisory committee this, this city already has. You already have kind of a UGB advisory committee in the rack right now. And it can be the basis for, you know, seamlessly be the basis for a modified version, be the project advisory committee. You already have a city council member, um, on that body. You have a member from this body. You have a member from each of the other boards and commissions, and then a variety of business and community group, um, members. So it makes sense to start with that group anyway for considering a project advisory committee. And then there's just a variety of other meetings with council, planning commission, um, focus groups with the community, a community survey, um, that's part of the process. And, um, but the bottom line is with all of this is just to get everybody's take on the uses that are planned, what's appropriate for North Plains, how do they go next to each other? Let's avoid having certain industrial uses so close to residential in the future. Um, what kind of transportation buffers, um, landscape buffer, all the other things that need to be, how do we, how can we, you know, how can we kind of place different density levels um, of housing in different places relative to where employment is to make transit better, more likely, those sorts of things. Um, the technical reports Glenn mentioned, the existing conditions reports, we have draft reports, um, that are in revised, uh, status right now, but that just kind of give all the background on existing policies, recommended policy changes. And, um, you know, vision and guiding principles that will, that really kind of dictate whatever, what, how the community moves forward on the planning process. And then, you know, alternative concepts of, of a draft concept plan. Um, and then a final concept plan based on, you know, refinement and, and outreach and, and input from city council and the planning commission. So fairly standard process, but we're at a point now, as Glenn said, where, um, the rest of the work is going to take about 12 months. And we have to have all the deliverables done and paid for by June 30th, 2026. So we're kind of up, up, we're kind of at a point where we've done what we can so far. But in order for the, all of this process, including all of the outreach and, and process going into figuring out what this looks like for the community. If we don't begin something, um, before the end of July, really, getting into early August, the chances of getting everything done in a 12, getting everything done by June 30th and paid for becomes decreasingly likely. So not to put a clock, not to, not to put the pressure of a clock on UGB expansion, but the reality is we're kind of at a point where, um, a recommendation, if it's going to move forward, should, and then this process would go along with it and inform what happens in that new UGB, um, boundary. Let's see. And that's pretty much it from a scope perspective. So, um, so yeah, that's currently underway to the extent that it's, it's, we've been able to do it and we're just kind of at a point where I need to assess what's next.
Open for questions?
Sure. Yeah, go for it. Yeah, sorry.
Um, so maybe you can clarify for me, like, what is the minimum requirement for you to move forward with those activities? Would it be good enough for planning commission to give you a recommended boundary? Even though it hasn't been necessarily approved and say start and you could work with that, or does it have to be something more significant than that?
Um, I, I think what we need honestly, so when we first built the project, it was, we have a pretty good idea of this 880 something acre UGB expansion and the scope is kind of fit perfectly towards that. But in effect, what we, you know, in, in visiting with Glenn and ODOT, what we determined was the planning process is meant to help you figure, help the community figure out what can go where inside the, 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 the undesignated lands, the study area around us, whatever the final UGB line is. It can be a smaller expansion than the original one planned. We still needed to study existing conditions. We still needed to go out and talk to the community about what they like, what they don't like, what can be together, where should the trails and roads go, no matter what the expansion ends up being. So long story short, the assured, you know, I, I guess it's the, it's the, the decision by the planning commission to consider and move forward some kind of recommendation that may change based on public outreach, all that, but that a process is moving forward on some kind of UGB recommendation. That's what's needed.
Okay. So you don't need approval by city council or anything like that. You just need us to recommend something. You can run that and start down the list.
Yeah, but basically, I mean, I think, yeah, we, I mean, we, we need the process to be moving forward on a recommendation of approval process, starting with your recommendation.
Okay.
Um, that's really what's needed because we're just in a, in a holding pattern, right?
Yeah, from, right, that's, that's spot on. We don't need anything official. This was really, you know, we put, we put this in the scope for us to have a stop and talk amongst ourselves that we didn't want to, you know, put a, a, a timeline that was convenient for us, but not for you in place that ended up causing some strife. So we wanted to make sure that we are, you know, sitting back, ready to help. Um, but now I just had to, yeah, we're getting a little bit close to needing to turn this deposit on, so to speak.
And let me just add to that, what, uh, Commissioner Miller was saying is that we had a workshop with the city council, the second one, where we actually had a chance to do our discussions. Uh, I think it was pretty obvious that we're all kind of in favor of the RAC's recommendation. And so according to just the concept plan for, uh, the relook committee and that thing is our next step would be to make a recommendation to city council. So I think that's probably where we want to go. Uh, if there's any questions, that now's the time to talk about it, but if we're all in agreement, then we would schedule that for our next meeting in July. With that, we have time for that to have the meeting, a public hearing or a recommendation? That would be a public hearing, correct?
So public hearing, um, we may not be able to make it in time for the newspaper notice requirement. Um.
If I can interject, um, there's, there's no need for a hearing. Um, this is really a staff to staff decision. And I've really placed it in, in, in your, your staff's hands to like, when you and your council and commission feel comfortable, let me know. But we just didn't want to, you know, cause any, you know, start any, any discussion that would cause a fire. Um, so if, uh, you know, I'll, I'll be working with, with Bill after, you know, you're talking, maybe Bill's going to, uh, you know, after you have a chance to either relay to your council members or, or, you know, he can pull them, but I, I watched the workshop too. And I do feel like people were, were, were lining up, but we wanted to make sure that you as the planning commission who are in charge of planning had the, uh, had the chance to, to really be front and center.
Glenn, Glenn to clarify there, um, Chair Stewart is talking about bringing forward a formal UGB expansion recommendation.
Okay.
Um, so, so I, I think, I think what I've heard and is that let's go ahead and move forward Glenn and work on next steps on, on getting the next stage of the process going. But the planning commission is looking at how soon they can actually move forward with the UGB recommendation.
Gotcha. Thank you. And my apologies, Chair. I, I didn't get all the drift there.
Yeah.
Well, it is a little bit of a weird tale.
It's right. One, Chair King, we as a planning mission can recommend to Glenn and to Bill to move forward with assuming we're going to begin the process of doing the approval for as, you know, the, the rack recommendation. with assuming we're going to begin the process of doing the approval for as, you know, the the RAC recommendation. And then that's enough for them. And then the second, and we don't need a public hearing for that, then the second one would be.
And that public hearing makes almost a minor adjustment, probably to what the RAC recommended, possibly. But the the big picture, the outline of it all.
But I'll be pretty close. But we can approve tonight for you guys to begin moving forward with that assumption.
I'm afraid that if we don't move forward sooner, that we're just gonna run out of time for this. I heard your list, but what needs to happen, and I'm imagining in my head, how many meetings and how long it's gonna take to get you there? And I think we're just gonna run out of time if we don't start moving soon.
The only thing I see is, this is what happened last time, and this is the reason everybody got mad is because they weren't involved and nobody's out there in those chairs right now to hear this especially new, you know, so I'm just like have everybody get all fired up and mad again. And then to have us end up back at the square one again, I I just kind of hate to, uh. Get who much in or her. I mean, I'm in agreement for, I'm in agreement for what we talked about last meeting, but that, but that wasn't exactly public hearing, kind of, everybody wasn't involved. And so it just feels like could be muddy in the waters by making this recommendation, in my opinion. From all the things I heard last time, I just don't want to recommend something and have it all plastered all over the place again, so caused a a big problem, so.
I mean, if we're gonna make the recommendation, it'd be next month anyway, right? Without public hearing?
Well, if it's an official recommendation, would have to be, is that not correct, official, has to be a public hearing? I mean, we can recommend it right now, but
For a public, for, well, it would be a the ordinance is dead, so it's a plan next to none.
It's two things, an official recommendation to the city council to move forward with the UGB growth expansion, that requires public hearing and everything. The second one, which is a approval for this body to continue to work.
I I I agree with Commissioner Miller. I I think if all you're doing is making a recommendation to the city council on we believe you should pick this up and and start moving it forward again, you can do that without having a public hearing. And then what the council would have to do is make a decision on that recommendation, right? What are they going to do? And if they agree with the planning commission to start moving it forward again, then that would be the kickoff for the public meetings. And we would pick it back up kind of almost where it left off, if you will, with the RAC. If that is what they chose to do, but that is really would be the next step is for the council to say, yes, we agree with the commission. Let's restart this thing and then we would go out and do the noticing and start holding meetings again with the planning commission first to get a recommendation on a UGB boundary on a map. And so you would hold hearings, whether it's one, two, three, however many hearings you felt comfortable with to get a recommendation. And then they would pick it up from there. But just to make a recommendation on doing something with the UGB, you would not have to hold public hearings for that.
Well, with that said, I just would like to make that recommendation for the planning commission to have the city council move forward with the RAC's recommendation. And I'd like to get verbal responses from all the commissioners, Commissioner Miller?
I support that.
Commissioner not in camp?
I do.
Commissioner how? Yep, Commissioner Don Adell?
I'm all for it.
Commissioner Barris, I support it. Commissioner Levante?
Yes.
And I also support it, so that's unanimous, so that should give you your marching tools.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Is there anything else with that?
Yes, so just to let you know, there's, there's a little bit of fog regarding what the RAC concluded with. And we just want to make you aware, and perhaps it's a meeting in July where you have the RAC or representative come back. But we don't have a, we we don't have a final definite recommended line from them. We have a map that most of them agreed looks like what the UGB expansion, the new expansion should be and why, and all the reasons after their whole process. But we don't have a single definite map that I could hand over to you right now, that's it. So between we, so we need to have, we need to, we need, we need a process staff wise or working with them or working with you to land on that specific map. It'll look ninety nine percent like what they concluded looked good. But it wasn't formally their recommendation as a bottom, so we are lacking that last step from them. And you, if you would like, you can bring them back in July. We also have some existing conditions reports from this process right here that you may want to hear a little bit about because it will tell you about flood risk, landslide risk and a variety of things. And that might inform where you may or may not want the line to be to to adjust. So there are some some small, but some moving parts in that.
I thought on the last RAC's meeting, we went from member to member to member. That wasn't noted?
It 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 was, but what the input we got, all of the individual input we got from each person. Most people said that map right there. Actually, what I want is that map, but we did have some people say so there's those the things in it or what's driving it uh, driving and and resulted in that map, but but the body itself didn't say that's the map. So it's a technicality, but I think what it means is we need a step with the rat, with a rat recommendation formally being made to you all. But it's at the three yard ball.
They should have done it then.
Isn't that something that we're going to do in our July meeting then? That's definitely your proposing, is that, is that a workshop or?
How how we, at the July meeting, yes, as well as maybe go over some existing conditions that might help you nail that map down. Maybe, maybe not. It may or may not affect what, how you think about it.
Well, but just wondering if we need a, to have some kind of workshop in between before our next meeting.
Potentially.
For that purpose.
Yeah, it it would be maybe a little bit difficult to get the RAC reconvened on that level of notice concern, but have four weeks between then and now. With less than two weeks notice, there might be an issue, especially considering the summer holidays. It's not impossible, though.
So before your July meeting or on your July meeting, how however, you know, either one. But I think we'd probably have more success getting more of the rack. Month from now, right, sorry, yeah, yep.
Well, and then the the determination, if it's going to be a workshop or actually part of the agenda.
Yep, and I'll, we can work you with with you on that, depending on how it it simmers and you decide, makes sense.
Okay.
We can do the workshop beforehand and then do the recommendation right after that?
Well, I think what we're seeing is, well, we can get most of the rack together with four weeks rather, rather than two with vacations and summer right now. So we're saying is
Do that before the July meeting?
I mean, maybe referring to a work session directly before the meeting and then going into session and and making a decision.
Right.
That that's one way I could play on, yes.
There is nothing that really locks us into a six o'clock meeting, regular meeting. We could have a workshop at six and then convene them at seven, sorry.
Absolutely.
Well, we can work that out then as we get closer to that, then. Is there anything else then we need to discuss on that? I don't.
I don't believe so, if anything comes to mind.
No, I think reconvening the RAC, getting a little bit more substantive guidance from them, considering the existing conditions report. However, that may change your decision and then, yeah, making sure that you have a public hearings. If you're going to make anything more than just a move forward recommendation, for a move forward recommendation. Yep, this should be sufficient.
Right. And Mr. Bowman, did you need anything else from us?
No, this is great. This is very helpful. I'll be in, I'm actually gonna be out a little bit next week or so, but I'll be back in touch with Bill when I get back.
Okay, well, then I, you can go, go home.
Hey, thanks for having me. I appreciate it. All right, take care.
We appreciate you coming too. Thanks.
Thanks, bye bye.
Okay, any other unfinished business?
We don't have that here.
New business?
Yes, right, no more unfinished service, that's right.
Okay, any unfinished business of any of the commissioners? Hearing none, moved item seven, which is new business?
Yes, I have some new business regarding actually air correction in our sign code. As you know, we did two amendments to the sign code in twenty twenty four. In that second amendment to the IPU sign code, there was actually error when the amendment was codified. And the standards which were meant to be stricken were continued to be in the code. They weren't stricken, so some new standards were added, but nothing was removed. Luckily, we have a provision in the municipal code to correct these types of clerical errors, so it'll be a new ordinance going to city council to simply strike those standards that you all intended to be stricken and correct that error, so we're expecting to do that in July.
Good. And any other new business?
Uh, one thing that is percolating out there is Great Master is working on an application for doing an addition to their property over there off of commercial, and I think that's three twenty first over there.
Three twenty fourth.
And so we do anticipate that application coming in soon. So that will come before you as a type three designer of your application.
And where does that fall in with the FEMA changes?
Well, they do have floodplain on the property and they also have significant natural resource areas. And they are staying completely out of those areas. So they're not going to impact that, and it's largely because the significant natural resource area covers the floodplain area. And it is more restrictive than the floodplain, and so they are staying completely out of those areas. Their initial plans showed them going in, but once they learned that, they they went out.
As long as they're developing a section that's not covering that, even though it's the whole tax lot, we don't have to worry about that.
As long as they're not in those areas, it does not apply. There will be, and as part of the staff report, we will address that, letting you know that these areas are on the property. But the project itself is not impacting those areas.
Okay. Any other new business?
One more thing. The city attorneys, the city attorney has recommended some slight tweaks to the FEMA regulations that you heard before, the the code, the zoning code that you heard before. And in order to enhance or or better assure that there are clear and objective standards to it, there are still kind of some a wrinkle between what FEMA is looking for and Oregon land use law. And so the the recommended tweet to the language from BEH needs to come back before you all to be reconsidered and then sent back to city council. So that won't take long, but that could be done, I should, I would think, in July and somewhat quickly. It already, it doesn't stop substantively change anything, it's just a tweak of which.
The only section that that, so what happened is when we brought it forward the first time, legal council didn't have that language drafted and we discussed it. And largely because the UGB was not moving forward, there was very little risk to the city adopting a code without that clear and objective criteria because it only applies to residential development. And all the residential development that could occur in the floodplain is already done for the most part inside the city. And the new development that would have occurred would have happened in any urban growth fabric expansion area. So we had a little bit of time to adopt the FEMA rules and move forward and then come back and add the clear and objective. Since you've had those meetings, legal council has now crafted that language. And because we have not held hearings yet with city council, we're gonna go back to you first, have another hearing, get a new recommendation and then move forward with the city council.
So this will be a public hearing?
This will be a public hearing, so we will not be able to make it in July. But we could probably make it in August to get all the noticing done, so we can meet those requirements.
Any other new business?
Don't lose.
Any new business for any of the planning commissioners?
One item, I was asked by a member of the EDC, they had been approached by the Roll Tide tenants and were inquiring about whether they could, whether the sign that had been proposed and we had considered at some point could be reinvigorated or at least investigated again. And so they said, you know, is there a way the city planners could reach out to Taco Time or whatever and and see if there's something that they have in mind that that could be considered?
We've been in communication with with those folks and we shared with them what the concern is. Just so everybody understands what's happening here, those businesses, we'd like to get
Are you talking about TIC or the monument sign? Because I think
No, no, you're talking about
Commissioner Miller, are you talking about monument sign or the highway sign?
The sign, no, the sign, the monument sign.
Monument signs.
Oh, the monument sign, okay, well, let me help you a little bit that when they first came in with that monument sign, they they wanted to put the monument sign.
No, I I remember all of that. I I'm just asking, is there a way you can reach back out and see if there's something that can be done to the satisfaction to get a sign?
Okay, two things here, two things here. One, nobody has come forward to us from Roll Tide to talk about a new location for a monument sign for the businesses there. There has been discussion about highway signage and what the requirements are for that. And so if you're not familiar with that, no, I said, no one has come forward though about a conversation about locating monuments.
Forward and saying that they've asked.
And so what I would say is come forward with the location and a design on where that would be located, so we can respond to that.
Okay, so the answer is?
I don't know.
You're not willing to reach out, they have to come to you.
It needs to be applicant driven and it's be a good conversation, have offline about what the possibilities are at this point.
Okay.
Just a question about that, the property where the proposed sign on is owned by Paco Bell and not Roll Tide.
It's not Roll Tide's property.
So they would need to talk to Taco Bell because they're the ones who would have to initiate the sign because it'd be on their property.
And and part of the problem was the addressing, right? You you put your address on the monument sign and the address was for Pacific Street, not Glencoe. And so those were some of the issues that arose the first time with that sign.
I think Paco Bell basically threw up their hands and said, we don't know how to work with the city planners. It's not, we we can't, we can't make it work.
That's why we'd have to see a proposal, kind of see what they're thinking.
If they brought in some free food, maybe we'd work on it.
Well, we are working with them on the highway signage and one of the solutions that we've come up for the highway signage is just so you guys understand is when you, when you want to locate on the highway and your business is not on Glencoe, the state requires you to install a follow up sign. And if the city's not willing to put a follow up sign in the street, then they won't allow you to get on to the highway. We've totally agreed to put up those follow up signs, but the problem is, is we we have one pole right now for those signs and it's right by Hobbs Fitness. And there's two businesses on there right now, there's Melly's and and Happy Play. And the signs are two feet by two feet. And what the city's trying to avoid is a totem pole of follow up signs for all the businesses there, as you can imagine, it would end up all the way to the ground. And so what we shared with Roll Tide is that they could work together and try and come up with one larger sign, kind of like the highway sign, but maybe a three by three or a four by four. Then we could put all the logos of all the businesses that they have on that sign with an arrow at the intersection of Pacific and Glencoe, so folks knew where those businesses were located. Part of the issue is they would like that sign more down by where the G four sign is. G four has a follow up sign as well, but that's not where the highway folks would like to see that sign. They want the sign at Glencoe and Pacific because they want it to be right before the turn that you have to take to get into those businesses. So that's some of the issues that these folks are dealing with. They don't have frontage on Glencoe. The sign code doesn't really work for them well for the monument sign situation. And they don't, and the state doesn't want them to put the other sign all the way down by
Steve, if I may add some context. So on these follow up signs, myself and fellow works director Dustin have been working on developing a plan for them. As Steve mentioned, there's two signs currently at the intersection of Pacific and Glencoe. The location they're posted in really isn't a safer approved location, they were just kind of put up to get them up. And so, uh, as discussed, we've been working with Dave Vandy on getting a four by four sign, um, and identifying a proper location for that. Actually worked with, uh, the travel information council contact with this, um, they're willing to have that sign placed further from the intersection as long as it's in a logical and safe location. Currently identified a site, uh, on Glencoe about mid-block uh, between Highland Port and Pacific, uh, right by the walkway that goes to G four archery. And so there's potential location there, uh, Dustin is working on calculating out some sightlines and potentially moving some regulatory signs around to make sure that everything is, uh, safe and visible. But that's the, the current phase of where we are on identifying a sign location before we can give approval. Um, it wouldn't be a permitted sign. We don't regulate wayfinding signs in the right way. Um, but it would be a, a matter of managing our right of way and managing, um, the relationship to the regulatory signs right now.
I was out of the loop on that, not involved in that conversation.
Alright, thanks, Ron. Any other new business of the planning commission? Okay, we'll move on to item number eight is the land use applications. Any questions on those comments? Or the three J report? Hearing none. Uh, move on to item number nine and planning commission comment. Any comment for planning commissioners, the staff or?
Is there any, uh, chance that they're gonna do anything at North Avenue and, uh, Shady Brook? When you're, uh, coming down North Avenue and you're gonna go north on Shady Brook? And you're sitting at the white line there, you can't see northbound. Cause the, you can't pull out far enough, so the other night I was sitting there and I was trying to edge out and then the car turning down North Avenue, coming heading north. You take, in order to see, the cars are coming forty-five miles an hour when you're coming there. Uh, the bushes and everything are right there. And, um, and then this other car wanted, basically was gonna take my fender off, of course, to try to turn there because you have to pull almost out into Shady Brook there.
So it looks like the curvix is in quite a, yeah, central section. I, what I brought up a long time ago was the Shady Brook should be a stop sign going southbound.
Something needs to be done.
And that's a, of course, that's a county thing, and I think maybe what we should do is try to at least talk to them about regulating that intersection.
Well, at least that one big bush or something, I think it needs to, there's a big tree kind of ambush and if that was out there, it might be because there's big trucks that come, growl trucks, all the trucks delivering out to Shady Brook Mill and it's like it's pretty bad.
Well, North Avenue now is in the city's, um, jurisdiction, but Shady Brook, so it'd have to be a coordinated effort there.
It's actually North Avenue is the problem, really.
Well, it's because you can't see, but the thing is if there was a stop sign on Shady Brook, assuming people will use it, then you wouldn't have the problem.
No, they don't use the one down here. I sit in my office and watch it all day long and go through there, so.
Yeah.
I know when Andy was here, we did try to work with P G E to get some of that vegetation cut back by the substation there and I think they did do a little bit of work on that, but probably not enough to really open it up. And, and that could be part of the solution there is just clearing that vegetation out. Um, but yeah, uh, it's not the first time that, you know, it has been brought to the city's attention that that is a intersection that has a little bit of a conflict.
And I agree with that because I, I do drive through there, so I have the same problem. Any other planning commission comments?
I have one suggestion. On our, um, now that we are having, well, maybe with the exception of the next workshop, now that we're having workshops after our, our meetings and then part of our current agendas, would it be possible in the minutes, um, to just give like a brief synopsis or a brief title as to what the workshop was? Cause since we don't have minutes of workshops, it's just would be a nice little reminder, oh yeah, that was the workshop we had regarding the U G B year. That's the workshop we have regarding code. Just some reference to, not, no detail, but just a reference to what the workshop was for.
Lori, Bill, any, any thoughts on that?
It's fine.
Just a minute for management.
There is something, something just like that.
There you go.
Gee, what more work?
What's happening to the property? By the post office that had all the pallets stacked up and all the cars and all.
Oh my god.
It did sell, yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
That's why it got cleaned up a little bit there, you know, uh, but nobody has come forward, uh, with any proposals yet for that property. It, it, I just noticed all of a sudden it was clean, so. But that was, I think we've made progress, right? Just getting it sold and getting it cleaned up, uh, has been real progress, uh. But yeah, no, so far no one has, uh, indicated what they would like to do with that yet.
Uh, I understand it's, the owner is going to lease it out as a single use space. But I haven't heard anything about the details on it, but I did talk to him. Any other finding commission comments? Okay, we have no extra fishy, so, uh, staff comments?
Yeah, I have one comment, um. I would just like to let you all know that this is my last planning commission meeting with the city, my last month with the city, um, moving over to Hood River to work at Hood River County as their planning manager. So, um, I appreciate the time with you folks. It's been a good almost three years, um, we've covered a lot of ground together, uh, brought on some new planning commissioners along the way, brought an old one back. Um, and, uh, you know, it's always, uh, challenging to work through some of these land use issues that come before the planning mission and the commission because it can be controversial, but I think, uh, you guys have handled it pretty well and, um, navigated those waters pretty well because you have a chair here who has a quite a bit of experience in, uh, in doing this, so. Uh, thank you all for having me and I wish North Plains all the best and I hope you can, uh, get the U G B proposal back on track and then moving forward.
Well, collectively for the planning commission, we wanna thank you and hope you the best that you're indulged in.
That's true.
Yeah. Any other planning commission business? If not, our regular, next regular meeting is going to be uh, July ninth here, uh, timeframe to be determined, but six o'clock if you don't hear otherwise, but with that, we're adjourned at six fifty-seven.